I do.
Really good. Well, I mean, they're all.
Look at the important stuff or what? Can I tell you something?
You can look at your cards.
Mr. Mayor. Short one council person. Delmar Strange.
What's wrong?
The board just said they're on a trip. They're on a trip.
Oh.
Wish I was on a trip.
I'm planning a trip. I haven't decided where I'm going.
I don't think I'm gonna make it till Christmas before I know where.
You take me with you. I need a trip.
Then I'm gonna wanna go somewhere warm.
Thanks, sir.
I told I have a week off from the 20th to the 26th.
There we go.
Isn't it about time I decide where I'm going?
With all the knowledge you have. Yeah.
Good meeting, let it get some light, I'm sorry. Well, August meeting to order the regular meeting for the Board of Aldermen for the City Edina for the month of September. You'll bear with me, we'll start with a little indication here. O gracious heavenly father, we thank you for our beautiful little town on the hill here and all the fine people that make up that town. We ask you to please lighten the burdens of the good citizens, if you would, Lord. And also, we ask, if we can, ask you to look in over the city employees as they go about their day-to-day operations and please help keep the city employees safe. Also, if you would, look in on the elected and appointed officials and please give them the courage and the vision and the wisdom to do things as you would have them done. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Renee, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Margaret, do we have minutes of prior meetings that we need to address?
Yes, August 10th, 2015, the Board of Aldermen made a regular session with Mayor Strickler presiding. Alderman present, Renee Edwards, Ron Stansbury, Rick Winter, Bill Alberti, Dot Krickser, Delmar Strange, absent none. Mayor Strickler called the meeting to order and gave the implication. Pledge of allegiance was led by Renee Edwards. Minutes of the July 13th meeting were read and approved with one correction. Alderman Strange noted that some of the fire hydrants have not been painted, so the minutes should reflect this. Collector's report was given and approved. Collector also reported that two water customers were disconnected for non-payment, but they have been reconnected. Melissa Yocum, 202 West Marion Street, reported to the board that the caution signs for children playing and the stop signs at West Marion Street and North Baker Street have done very little to slow the traffic down on Marion Street. Melissa said the signs have probably caused some to avoid the area by taking other streets. There was some discussion regarding different ways to slow this traffic. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Dot Krickser to install speed bumps on West Marion Street near the North Cotty Street intersection. Motion carried unanimously. There was a consensus to leave stop signs on West Marion Street at the North Baker Street intersection. Peggy Collins, City Treasurer, met with the board. She said the E-911 budget should be amended to reflect the invoice, which is $16,667. Motion was made by Bill Alberti and seconded by Ron Stansbury to amend the budget as recommended by the City Treasurer. Motion carried unanimously. Treasurer's report for July was reviewed and approved. Collins noted that she has reviewed and approved the city's 2014 audit. She said the only finding was a lack of segregation of duties, which is normally difficult to accomplish within a small organization. Peggy noted that there are procedures in place to address this, and she reviews all reports on a monthly basis. Motion was made by Bill Alberti and seconded by Ron Stansbury to pay all bills as presented, with the exception of the Klingner and Associates bill, which will be considered with the sewer project invoices. Motion carried unanimously. Mayor Strickler asked that the records reflect the recent passing of Dayton Grover, a city employee for many years at the water plant and also as a dispatcher. Mayor Strickler said Dayton was exemplary employee and that Edina will be a sadder place without him. At 7:30 PM, Mayor Strickler announced the opening of the public hearing for comments prior to setting the property tax rates for 2015. He said the total assessed valuation for 2015 is $10,519,012, and the tax rate allowed by the state auditor's office is .8974. There were no comments. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Dot Krickser to set the tax rate at .8974. Roll call vote was taken and the motion carried. Eyes were Renee Edwards, Ron Stansbury, Rick Winter, Bill Alberti, Dot Krickser, and Delmar Strange, nays, none. Regina Leckby, President of the Knox County Promotional Council, met with the board. She requested street closings for the annual Knox County Corn Festival, which will be September 11th, 12th, and 13th. There was a consensus to allow the street closings for the corn fest. Leckby also requested some financial support from the city to help the promotional council to sponsor and promote the corn festival. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Delmar Strange to pay $1,000 to the Knox County Promotional Council for the services, activities, and public benefits provided by the promotional council in connection with the 2015 Knox County Corn Festival. Motion carried unanimously. Thomas Christian, Director of the Knox County Community Center, met with the board. He said their contract with the city renews annually in June, but he has been unable to make the June and July meetings. He requested that the contract with the city be modified to increase the city's payment to $2,000, which reflects the amount they have paid for city services for the prior 12 months. Motion was made by Bill Alberti and seconded by Rick Winter to modify the contract with the community center to allow for a payment of $2,000. Motion carried. Eyes were Ron Stansbury, Rick Winter, Bill Alberti, Dot Krickser, Delmar Strange, nays were Renee Edwards. Under citizen comments, Echo Menja said she was informed on Friday that the Knox County Community Development Corporation, the KCCDC, owns the building at the Edina City Lake, which was once the Edina Golf Club's clubhouse. She asked the board if they agreed that the buildings built by the golf club now belong to the KCCDC, and if so, what type of documentation is there to show that they own the buildings? She also asked the board if they have any say in what happens to the buildings and who occupies them. Echo asked if the KCCDC has a contract or lease for the use of the building's parking area and grounds. She also requested whether the board has seen the contract between the city and the Edina Golf Club, and whether there is a contract between the city and the KCCDC. The board had little or no response to Echo's questions, but Alderman Stansbury said they would get some answers and get back to Echo. Mark Ross of Klingner and Associates met with the board. He reported that work on the city's sewer improvement project has begun. He said there was some question about the service laterals, and these will be put in. Any that were not done will be put in before the project is completed. Mark presented three pay requests to the board for their approval. Following action was taken. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Ron Stansbury to approve the Willis Brothers' pay request, number one, in the amount of $313,561.40. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Renee Edwards to approve the Utility Solutions' pay request, number one, in the amount of $40,905. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Ron Stansbury and seconded by Delmar Strange to approve the Klingner and Associates' pay request in the amount of $20,385.30. Motion carried unanimously. Mark stated the estimate of funds to be requested from USDA Rural Development is $378,241.70. Motion was made by Bill Alberti and seconded by Rick Winter to approve the estimate of funds recommended by Mark Ross. Motion carried unanimously. Ross recommended that an additional inspector, Joshua Hartsack, be approved for the sewer project. His resume and job description were reviewed by the board. Motion was made by Bill Alberti and seconded by Dot Krickser to approve Joshua Hartsack as an inspector for the sewer project. Motion carried unanimously. There was some discussion regarding the use of concrete or asphalt to replace the trenches that have been dug in the streets for the sewer lines. The mayor can read the rest of it.
There was some discussion regarding the use of concrete or asphalt to replace the trenches that have been dug in the streets for the sewer lines. There was a consensus to use concrete as the contract dictates, with some gravel streets being the exception. Ross informed the board that a pipe bursting operation will be done to avoid a detour of the Highway 15 traffic. He said signage will be required for the manhole work on Route 6, lane drops, flagmen, and channelizers for the pipe bursting on Route 15, and allow traffic to use other side streets when a portion of Route P is closed. Motion was made by Bill Alberti and seconded by Rick Winter to approve all the MoDOT permits and authorize the mayor to sign a letter to MoDOT allowing traffic from Route P to utilize adjacent streets to access Route 15 or Route 6 as needed, and not hold MoDOT responsible if any damage should occur to city streets. Motion carried unanimously. According to Mark Ross, the design work has been completed for the Purcell Street Sewer Project, and this project can be bid whenever the city wants to proceed. Motion was made by Delmar Strange and seconded by Rick Winter to go to bid for the Purcell Street Sewer Project. Motion carried unanimously. Kelly Hayes, Chief of Police, reported that he sent several more letters and a ticket to some residents that need to mow their properties. He also said he will be watching the traffic more on Marion Street. Ty Parrish, Utility Supervisor, met with the board. He reported that his department has been busy with the sewer project, which involves lots of locates. He also said that Steve Peters, the newest employee, has started working for the city. Ty said Ameren Missouri has donated a 2006 Ford truck to the city. This is a 37-foot aerial truck, which will be used for trimming trees, maintenance of the streetlights in the business district, hanging Christmas decorations, and numerous other jobs that now can be performed in a safer manner. Jeff Dosmet with the board. His concern was the amount of water during a big rain that cannot be handled by the existing culverts, and flows onto his property from the community center, their parking lot, and other areas uptown. There was some discussion, but the problem was not resolved. Later in the meeting, Ty, Mike Wright, and Alderman Stansbury agreed to meet with Jeff to discuss this further. Mike Wright, Wastewater Superintendent, met with the board. He reported that July was a very wet month, and the average flow was 368,000 gallons per day, which calculates out to 167% of the design flow and 11,414,000 gallons treated. Mike also said it had been a difficult month to maintain the ball fields. He said the big field had been too muddy to mow and will be sprayed. The little field has had big rocks in it left from the flooding. Alderman comments. Alderman Strange noted some maintenance jobs that he feels the city crews should be doing. He also suggested that a time clock be installed at the city maintenance building to ensure that workers are putting in their time. Motion was made by Renee Edwards and seconded by Rick Winter to adjourn. Motion carried, and the meeting was adjourned. Are there any additions or corrections? No wonder that meeting took eight hours.
It was a long meeting.
If there are no additions or corrections, those minutes are considered approved by consensus. Okay, next, the pledge of allegiance? No, we did that. Collector's report.
Hello. Collections for August. The water total, $20,960.36. Sewer total, $26,379.20. Sanitation total, $13,937.94. General fund total, $8,569.48. Recreation total, $319. Street total, $2,180.94. Special lights total, $13.72. Meter deposit total, $460. Reserve and improvement fund total, zero. With a grand total collected, $72,820.64.
Very good. Any questions for the collector? Do we need to discuss this, or?
I need a copy though, because I don't remember that. Was that a week or so ago? Sorry.
It looks like we had a lady who got a shut-off notice and was very upset about it.
Yes. But I don't, I only send those out, like, we will call if it's their first or second time on there, and our list shows every month when I print it out. That was, she's been on there four times in the last 12 months, so she got one. It just so happened that she dropped her payment off after it was already hung before she got there to see it.
So, yeah.
It was already done. She had not made the payment prior to it being hung.
So it was just a question of timing?
So like this last month, when you have between 40 and 50 to hang? And, I mean, sometimes it takes the guys a little bit to do that, because it's all over that they have to do that. And we did have a lot more this time, but...
Did everybody get, manage to pay?
Yes, we had, um, one, two, two that we shut off. Or one that actually got shut off, the other one came in, and then that one called and came in and took care of it. But we had even, even when we send the shut-offs out, I still, the day that the guys go to shut-off, I stay through my lunch hour, and I call every one of them that's still on it and try to give them another chance. So they have plenty of chances, it's just...
Thank you for doing that.
We try really hard, because it's a lot of work if we have to shut them off. It's a lot of work for them. They have to hang the shut-offs, then they have to go back and shut them off, and they have to go turn them on. It's a lot of work for us and the computer. So we try really hard to keep from shutting them off if they cooperate.
But we didn't have to shut this?
We did not, no. She, her payment, basically, and that's what we try to tell people too, is when we hang those, that's just a reminder, you still have 24 hours to call or get your payment in before the guys get sent out.
Well, she's upset because she had those notices hanging on their door.
Yes.
Well, and she questioned why, why we have a penalty on there.
Yeah, she wanted to know why we have a penalty, but if you look, I even went home and looked at, we looked at our other bills, like, from the gas company and the electric company, they also have that on there. They also hang shut-offs.
Yeah, if you pay on time, this is what it is. If you pay late, this is what it is.
And technically, what, who was it that, was it Mr. Devaney that told us that hanging the shut-offs was actually just a courtesy? We aren't required to do it?
Right.
So, I mean...
Our attorneys, oh, he's told us that, that we don't really have to even send out notices or anything.
Sorry, the poor lady was...
But we didn't mean, yeah, we didn't mean to hurt anybody's feelings. I mean, we just, we send them to everybody, but...
I understand. Any further questions for the city collector? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
City Treasurer could not be with us this evening, but the report is here. And is this the proper time to go into the?
Question, because they have some of the invoices in there.
Good time to go forth. Well, the part, we spent money to work on the shelters and all, but I guess we didn't think, or I didn't think about not having enough money in the recreation fund to pay for it, so we need to amend the budget. If we, uh, we've got this rehab fund that you see about halfway down, which dates back to the 80s. And, and we didn't want to just close out that fund, so we're gonna take this rehab fund money and put that towards this shelter. The shelter thing came to $6,325.64, so we're gonna, with the board's approval, take this $1,556, rough it out, and apply that to the, and we'll close that fund. Then we're gonna amend the capital improvement fund to pay the balance of $4,769.64. And then, while we're at it, we need to amend the sanitation budget for capital outlay of $2,519 to pay for the dumpsters, the additional dumpsters that we need. Clear as mud? Well, thank you, Mr. Winter, that's nice of you. Mr. Stansbury? Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those amending the budget, please raise your hand. All those opposed to amending the budget, raise your hand. All those abstaining, raise your hand. Now, the clerk, I count five eyes, no nays, and we have one answer. Any other notes from the treasurer? Good. Well, that would bring us to item number seven, the monthly bills. Has anybody had a chance to peruse and examine the monthly bills?
I think I saw there was a four-inch clamp that cost $500 and something.
Oh, that's a lot on top here, not, that was our accessory for our locator?
The induction clamp?
Yeah, it's, it's just described as, it just says a four-inch clamp.
Yeah, I thought maybe this was like a water clamp.
It's an induction clamp that hooks up, like, for meters in the basements where we can't get a ground off of our locator. You just go in, it hooks, plugs into our receiver and hook it around the copper wire or hook it around a water line. It's been kind of a lifesaver. And I'm not sure, Margaret and I were talking about that the other day, I think we still had a little bit of, I think we budgeted for like three grand for locator, and we didn't use all that, so it shouldn't have covered that.
Yeah, we had spent, we had budgeted for our locator, so we used the rest of that, and then the rest of it came down, but you were watering it.
I was just curious, because it said four-inch clamp, and I'm thinking $500 and some dollars for a four-inch clamp.
Get one at Home Depot for $6.
Make that thing out of gold, or what?
It's been pretty handy. We've used it quite a bit lately.
Yeah, they're, they're all handy.
Any other questions?
Was there a project on Allen Mordred's street or something? I see some rock.
Oh, well, you might see, on any of the rock tickets, you may see Allen Mordred or Ron Stansbury or anybody. If a citizen requests that we haul rock, if I don't tell, who the guys, they'll tell us who it was we're hauling it for. And then we bill the customer. I mean, it's on our bill, and then Melissa bills it, and we bill then also for hauling, it's $2 a ton. Yeah, you know, if somebody wants to figure it out, yeah.
So you don't have to take your van out there, shuttle the back end full of gravel?
Saying my truck wasn't there?
Oh, I forgot, you got heavy Chevy. So, the chairman entertained a motion to pay the bills, preserve the city's good credit rating. I'll make a call. Thank you, Mr. Stansbury.
I'll second.
One, thank you, Ms. Krickser. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Now, the clerk, I count five eyes, no nays, no distinctions. One is still absent. Citizens' concerns. Is this a good time to talk with Jeff, or are we gonna talk about?
I figured that was under unfinished business. I thought maybe that was under unfinished business or something. I don't, I don't know how you guys do it.
Well, we could do it then, or we could do it...
Depends on how quick you want out of here.
I'm just coming back to, nobody met with me or anything since last meeting, so I was just coming back to see what the, what was going on.
Okay.
Did you guys, did you have a chance to find answers to those questions I started asking last month?
I got an answer from the mayor, and I haven't talked to John yet, but, uh, yes. I do have an answer.
Okay. Yeah, for Mark.
Get rid of him.
We know Mark has a long way to go. Okay, let's, let's, at this time, go to item nine and talk with Mr. Mark Ross.
Going up, alright. Plugging away on land pipe in the ground, probably about 50% done with the plane of the bike, but landing people aren't here yet. Manhole people are probably about 40% done. The plant people, the people that be working on the plant, we've gotten through our... Uh, the plant people, uh, the people that be working on the plant, we've gotten through our shop drawings, some metals, our equipment, and all that stuff. And, uh, that equipment is on order. I expect some of it to come in probably, some in October, some in later November. So they'll be probably mobilizing in November to do some of that work. Fortunately, it's not something that weather's gonna impact a huge amount, so it's, uh, we'll only need a time on those aerators and some of the controls and things like that, so. Uh, that's kind of where we're at. Uh, the other thing is, is I noticed, uh, driving around town just a little bit before the meeting, there's some trenches that need a little more rock in, and what they've been doing is trenching and then letting it settle for a couple of weeks, and put a little more rock back in. I know particularly in more than downtown, more recent areas, a little more retention. And so I'd let, I expect to do that. Uh, they're probably going to start working on some concrete work, uh, maybe before the end of the month, to try to go ahead and dress those trenches back up or shore them, so. Look for that before we meet again. I did get, uh, we had a couple of pay requests, a couple of bills, and then, uh, an estimate of funds we need to address this evening, so. Keep on moving with this. Uh, we received pay application number two from Willis Brothers for three hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars that we need to, uh, consider for approval. Uh, we reviewed that and recommend approval.
So we need a motion to that effect?
Can we just pay them last month already?
Yeah, we'll be doing it monthly until they're about done, so it's, it's progress estimates as they go, so.
Based on the work completed?
Yep, yep. They've, uh, their contract's around two million dollars, and with this, they will leave it about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of the two million, and then, of course, we're three weeks, two to three weeks into the next month already, so we're about fifty percent. Make a motion with that.
Thank you, Mr. Stansberry. Okay, thank you, Ms. Edwards. You got a figure?
Three hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Okay.
We did. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, I count five ayes, no nays, no extensions.
Uh, we also received a pay application number two from Utility Solutions, who's doing manhole work, in the amount of fifty-four thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and seven cents.
Okay.
Make the motion to that.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Stansberry. All in favor of paying Utility Solutions, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign.
No discussion, will it?
Oh, I forgot, did you wanna?
No, I said, there's no need to discuss it, will it?
Not really. Five ayes, no nays, no extensions. Who else did we pay?
Uh, we have, we have two other invoices. One is from Gilmore and Bell. They're, they're the bond counsel. Uh, did the bond transcripts and all of that work, and that's been, of course, all completed. Uh, and that bill is for twenty thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. So, the council needs to consider approval.
Okay.
I move with that.
Thank you, Mr. Alberti. Is that a second?
Yeah, that was a second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kritzizer. Uh, any discussion? There being no further discussion, all those in favor, motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, five ayes, no nays, no extensions. But Gilmore and Bell be paid.
Okay, and then the last one is, uh, the finer invoice, uh, which includes some construction administration work, reviewing the, uh, pay requests, the shop drawings, cementals, uh, working with contractors on those, and then, of course, our inspector being on site out there, and, and that total is forty thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
One hundred and twenty-eight?
Four, forty-one twenty-eight ninety-eight.
And ninety-eight? Okay. The chairman would entertain a motion to pay. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, five ayes, no nays, no extensions.
Last thing we need to approve is the estimate of funds of reimbursement requests, that, that money comes from USDA to pay those bills. And that total is four hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and five cents.
That's the total of all the bills?
That's the total of all those bits.
I so moved.
I'll second, yeah.
Okay, so we're requesting reimbursement for USDA.
Where else are they gonna give it?
Requesting reimbursement for USDA, which is, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining, same sign. Madam clerk, five ayes, no nays, no extension. Let's ask USDA for the dough.
Uh, one last item. Last month, we talked about the Purcell Street lift station and work over there. We were ready to bid that, and, uh, we were checking to make sure we had all easements in place, and the city had not worked with the attorney to finalize those easements. So we've got, Mr. Devaney's got two of them ready, and I think has given, uh, has he given them to you guys to go ahead and get signed? I had, or I received email correspondence from, uh, he was gonna drop those off, and then the one for the farm shop is evidently.
Hold up.
Yeah, there's a, there's a holdup with that with regard to the deed, and I guess it's not consistent or something, so he's gotta straighten that out. When that gets straightened out, then we can go down. We've talked to all of those folks. They all seem, at least verbally, agreeable to signing these easements, and so once we have the documents, we will get them signed and recorded, and then we'll be ready to bid that project, so.
Okay.
I don't know, the time, the timeline depends on the city attorney at this point, so.
Okay.
We're ready to go whenever those documents are signed, so.
And we will check with them?
Quick question out of curiosity. The bonds, are those sold on the open market, or they?
Yeah, the municipal bond market typically, yeah.
I mean, these can't be paid in much of any.
Um, you know, I'm not really sure. I mean, the, the interest rate you guys are borrowing at is like two and three quarters or something like that. You know, the little bond market is, actually, it's probably gonna do to go up.
Well, maybe frightened?
Yes. But, uh, I, I don't know, it, it's, they're, they're more desirable because of their long-term investment and their stability. That's typically, that they're that niche of investors that like.
I was just curious.
Yeah. They're not as risky as, therefore, you don't get the.
Are those bonds interest-free too?
Um.
Or tax-free?
Yeah, I think they are tax-free. I believe they are. Yeah. Any other questions?
I don't have any at this point. Uh, thank you, Manny. I'll give you a call.
Alright, sounds good. I, I need to know what, go ahead.
I'd ask Mark to, we're at, we were tied, called me today. We was having a little trouble. The water tower's not communicating with the booster station at this time because of the phone, it communicates over a phone line and a pressure sending unit. I'd asked Mark to look into, since we're making the lift stations all, um, we're upgrading them and how they communicate to us as far as in an emergency, um, they'll call us on our phones and tell us what's going on, and we can look it up on the internet to find out if there's a problem at those situations. I'd asked him to go ahead and look into, um, upgrading the water tower, um, just to kind of get us some hard numbers, so we would know what to look at. Um, that's not really my place, so I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that I was the one that sicked him on that, and if it's too much, it's too much. If it, if it works out, that we can do that at the same time.
A good idea to check into it.
We, we've had trouble, we've had trouble with that two or three times in the last couple of years, and it's on a designated circuit that has a little bit of trouble, and it's all through the phone. This'll all be, um, done radio style, so that we won't have that problem, so. I'd asked him to look into it and get us some hard figures that we could work with, and hopefully, when we do all the others, maybe they can do something with the water tower at the same time that they're in town doing the wastewater stuff too.
I've done some of these in the past, and, you know, I, it's gonna be probably around five thousand dollars, but that's, the one that I'm looking at is about a half to a third of what most of the other types are out there, so. And you're, and we're already doing that system with your lift stations and your wastewater thing, so this is just another piece that would.
We can add it on to our existing.
They go to the same location, review data and things like that. It's all there. And, of course, it calls them if there's alarms and things like that, so. But I'll get you a motion proposal for that, or I'll get it to Mike, and then he's just gonna look into it, what you wanna do, so.
Yeah, that's.
I just thought I, the water tower run over today, cause it wouldn't communicate with the booster station, so. Um, until they get the phone line fixed, Ty's running the booster stations manually. He has to turn them on and.
I'd rather be a little, a little twofold than a little too empty.
Right.
It's bill, yeah.
But it could go the other way very easily. If it doesn't communicate while they're off, it won't tell it to come on, so it just happened to be that they were on when we lost communications. If they were off and we lost communications, they won't come on, so it could've went, it could've went the other way just as easy as.
New setup won't rely on a phone line at all. There will not be a hard line between them, so.
Super wide.
What is it, internet?
It's fine. It's, it's actually cellular communication, and, and this, this company can work with any cellular, whatever has the best signal. They're not limited to just what's around here. They can use Verizon, or AT&amp;T, or Sprint, or whoever.
I just.
Sounds like a good idea, yes. I'm glad you brought that to our attention. I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, it's not, it's not impacted by weather at all.
Good.
I've done probably, involved probably fifteen to twenty of these. I never get calls about, well, that didn't work, or I'm having problems with it, so it's darn near bulletproof.
Good. That's what we want.
Alright. Mark, I'll just have you mail the paperwork to me if you would.
Okay.
Have to get signed, so. Any questions, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Ross.
Yep.
Yeah, let's back up to citizens' comments. I see we had a citizen show up. Would you?
I just stand here?
Yeah, or you can come sit down up here, whatever you.
Um, we just want like speed bumps or stop signs on Lafayette and Fulton. There are a lot of little kids. I don't know, you guys know what I'm talking about?
At Lafayette and.
And Fulton.
And Fulton.
It's down by your house?
Yeah, we're, like, by where we live. A lot of people run the stop sign, a lot of people go pretty fast, and there are a lot of little kids playing where, um, Junior Crabtree has that empty place on the corner. They play there a lot, and my girls and the girls at Grandma and Betty's. We don't let them, but once in a while, they run across the street to go to Grandma's, you know, and I would just appreciate if people went slower.
Is this the same people that we've got off the other street now, or isn't that?
Sounds like it. Are there currently, is, is, are there stop signs in some of those sections there?
Did this ju, did this just start, or has it been an ongoing thing for a while?
There are a few names. I'm not gonna say them, but there are a few that run the stop signs. There's one that just flies by our house and turns that corner, and, like I said, in a block up is that, I don't know what road that is, like that Miller house.
That'd be Baker.
Baker and Baker. There are little kids there that are in the road a lot. I don't know if anybody's watching them, but there's just, there are a lot of little kids in that area, and I don't know.
Lafayette's a, there's not a stop sign on Lafayette.
There's not at all.
You can hit the four-way stop, go clear west out of that.
No, it's, it's all.
All night. Nothing, nothing where we can set up.
I don't think it'd matter if there was. I mean, you've got farm equipment going through there, big four-wheel drives with doodles on all of them, with cultivators behind. You've got, and I mean, they're in road gear, all the way from the four-way, all the way down the hill. And I mean, they couldn't get stopped within half a block for loving their mud. But, and trucks, some, some trucks are the same way. There's some people that are, and cars, but I mean, there's a lot of fast traffic to go by there.
Are you agreeing with me?
Yes.
It was a term of the farm stuff, yeah, yeah, I mean.
How's it going with the ones that you guys put out?
With what?
The ones that are over by Melissa's.
Oh, it's a lot, our Lafayette and Fulton are a lot more busy than Marion, I have to say.
I'm wondering if, uh, then, like you say, they stopped going down Marion, they just go down Fulton, Lafayette now.
Those, yeah, those people were either going up Marion to the highway, or Lafayette and Fulton, so maybe it's busier now. I don't know, but. I'm glad I wanted, thank you.
Could, what? Could we maybe have Kelly visit with her and see if they can come up with a proposal?
That sounds like a good program.
Cause we only have the one set of speed bumps, right? We don't have another set.
We need a plan. We, we've got one speed bump.
The speed bump slows them down better than stop signs.
We got one.
That speed bump will have to come up before winter.
But, uh.
Or they'll plow it off, so it'll be temporary for.
If we had Chief Hayes meet with you, do you think you all could talk and maybe come up with some ideas?
I've got a surveillance camera. We could livestream. I'm, I'm not kidding. We could livestream speeders going through there.
Like I said, there are about three that just don't care.
You don't think that would change Miranda pulling her license plate numbers and.
What do you mean?
Doing burnouts on this speed bump.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
He said he checked there once long ago.
Well, it's, I like, uh, Mr. Alberti's idea, we'll have the chief of police get with you and see if, if we can't come up with some kind of a traffic plan for over there.
Or you can talk to Ryan. I mean, Ryan wants him too, but for some reason, I had to come.
That's what I wanted.
Well, we'll get with Ryan too then. That sounds like a good idea, and see what we can do.
And, you know, there's certain individuals involved. I don't know why, they couldn't be tough to.
I'll start ticketing them.
I'll give them a, uh, autograph.
Yep.
I said, we can get some tickets. It's not gonna hurt anybody.
Right, yes.
We're not trying to put you off, but, I mean, unless we have a, some kind of plan.
Right.
So, we'll try to have someone visit with you and Brian, and see if we can come up with some plans, and then we'll do what we need to, cause we certainly don't want any accidents.
That's right.
Is there a time of the day that's more, that's worse, like mornings or evenings, or, cause like, all the time?
It's pretty much all the time. In the late afternoon, there are a couple of it. Fly by.
And a lot of times, it's the same ones, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and we'll, we'll do something, see what we can do, I guess. How long, do you remember how much that speed bump was? It sticks in my mind. There wasn't any two dollar ninety-eight cent deal.
It was actually two of them, you know.
I mean, once we start this, there's, there's a whole worth of them. Cause like, that's the same thing at my street. There's about twelve kids in my neighborhood, and like I said, I'm just gonna stay out in the street. Cause like, that's the same thing at my street, there's about twelve kids in my neighborhood, and like I said, I'm just gonna stay out in the street one of these days. It's not what we could.
Well, there's two houses over in our neighborhood that, that don't watch their kids, I mean, they're in the road a lot, and. And I don't know what to do about that, but cars flying by.
Well, I don't either, because we can't safeguard everybody from everything, right?
I think that if we fix, then they'll just start going down Jackson. Into all those streets that run that way.
Try and enforce the speed limit in town, I mean.
And then, what is the, one that goes by ten blocks on?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Unless posted otherwise, like twenty-five.
Oh, Fred Kinsley's house, oh, I don't know. But you know, one of those three.
Twenty-five looks like sixty-five, they're going by your house, you know, I mean.
Down through there, twenty-five would be plenty fast enough.
That is true.
It'd be better to have a slower kid.
But would they listen to the sign?
Well, that's for your. That's whenever you're. For your stop signs coming in, and you have a reason for it. Stop signs, your enforcement, come in on it. We've put stop signs all over town for people, so I guess my.
They just sit out in bearings here, so they, they don't expect it to slow anybody down, but they wanted, if there was an accident for the. Legality of it, the person to, if there's a stop sign there, then they can cite someone for running the stop sign, whereas where there's no stop sign, then. Where they're thinking on a tail end at least, if there's an accident and the person who ran the stop sign would be at fault. And could be cited.
Okay, well, that's something I hadn't thought about, but that's.
No, I'm good. No, I'm good.
But we'll do some studying on that then.
You call that thing a camera, or what, what do you call it?
Livestream.
A livestream?
You could put a camera there, nobody'd mess with it. Or you could be there with it.
Can they put it in somebody's house or something?
Yeah, we could, I've got a motion activated surveillance camera that's got night vision and. High definition video display that we could put up there, and you guys could see what was going on with your cell phones. Or you, you know what I mean, someone go by.
Technology continues to.
Well, we just need the citizens to help and call it in.
I probably wouldn't be seeing it on my cell phone. My cellphone has a rotor dial on it.
Okay, well, let's go back to. We've got applications for building permits that we need to consider. First one from Tony Marvel. On West Reed Street. And that's where they're moving the farm and home. Store two, a metal hundred by a hundred and twenty building. Made of sticks and metal, contractors, Tony Hamlin and Mark Kluckey. Estimated date of completion, February of twenty sixteen. I'll see when they built up the ground, hopefully. Looks like it's, it looks to me like it's high enough, I, I'm sure they double checked to figure out how high they need to be.
Where's anywhere that water's coming from, it's gonna come down. Some big painting wall.
Yeah, or mowed around the backside or something where.
I'd love all that.
I'm gonna tell you what, Margaret. So is what they, this says four acres, what they've got cleared off, they're four acres.
Well, I don't know if they've cleared off all four acres.
Well, that's what I want. I'd like to know what.
I believe so.
Says there there are a hundred feet tall.
Right, we'll go.
I, we approve, well, thank you, Mr. Alberti. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, raise your hands, all those opposed, same sign, all those abstaining, same sign. Madam, five eyes, no hays, let's clearly take place. A Mr. Scott Crowns. At five oh eight North First Street. Has, he had an addition on his house that was getting in bad shape, so he tore down the addition and basically is. Pretty much put the addition back on. So I personally don't see any problem with it.
Same size and everything?
No, it's a little bit smaller.
Well, I guess I don't know that.
I don't know.
It's a little bit smaller than the.
A little bit smaller?
Mm-hmm. Be a lot nicer. Lot nicer.
He said it was in pretty bad shape.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to.
Okay.
Except, he needs to make sure he knows it's one year, I mean, it's very plainly there, but.
I think, I think it won't be hardly any time at all. He's got, yeah.
Very plainly there, but.
He's not gonna wanna be working on that for winter.
Bill.
Let's get it closed down.
Senior Alberti. All those in favor, raise your hand, all those opposed, same sign, all those abstaining, same sign. Madam, clear five eyes, no hays. No abstentions. Uh. Department reports, Mr. Tom Harris. I guess Ty tonight was driving, or is driving, the bucket truck, which I guess I hadn't.
Or so we can go see it.
Hadn't had a chance, and everybody wants to step outside and see what our bucket truck, I, no offense against Ammer and UE, but I figured it's gonna be kind of old rust bucket with the fender flapping and.
Pretty nice, actually.
I think we should go out and take a look at it, with the councils, a pleasure here. Yeah, if you wanna go up in the bucket. You can go up in the bucket.
Liability issues.
Are you gonna put somebody in it and put Renee?
Wait a minute, three hundred pound capacity, we can't all get in there then at one time?
We've kinda turned it into our, rather than leaving it set just for a brush truck, we've kinda turned it into our service truck, so. It's got a silver camera in it, um. We're kinda loading it up to use for a service truck, other side's the same, we've got a small generator on the other side to run the camera. Parts, tools, shovels. Handy ladder racks, frigging in and out manholes with.
Got eighty, just gonna get eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand? Thank you, Ammer and UE.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it takes years to get them, might as well.
Right, yeah, yeah, we've been asking for. Many years now.
Well, that's good.
Have we ever thanked Ammer and UE?
We did something nice in the paper. Yeah, and we gave them some.
We've sent lots of letters asking, could you give us some?
Did you see it in the paper?
Oh, I saw it, I took pictures.
Yeah, we took a picture and did, did it up.
Yes.
Very nice.
Yeah. Well, I like it. Well, yeah, in your spare time, if you could knock out a little letter of thanks, and then maybe all the council people could stop by and sign it, so we could. It'll look a lot nicer if it's got everybody's name on it, rather than just mine.
Right, yeah.
Cool.
Very nice. I like you like you.
Okay, kids, recess is over.
The curve for the drain is higher than the road. You know how it is, isn't it? Yes, it is. I might wanna borrow that.
Hanging Brenda's Christmas lights?
Don't let her know that. Grief, I got enough of that crap on already.
She started hanging lights at you?
Oh, well, it's year round, her. But if she knew I could get a bucket truck, yeah, she'd have them on every tree in the yard.
What are you talking about, Brenda and Christmas lights?
Yeah.
How did I know?
That usually sane woman is insane during Christmas.
She loves Christmas.
We could direct our attention back to the main stage here.
Um.
I, I thought that you guys did a good job, I thought the town looked very nice for a corn festival, I think you guys deserve a big pat on the back for. All you did in the middle of a construction project and.
Yeah, it's hard to get time sometimes, but, um. Yeah, I thought, I didn't hear any complaints, I think you're okay. We got our cinders holed in for the winter in the middle of last week too, we got five loads of those in, so that's done. Um, we did get sickle mowing done, Steve sickle mowed there the first part of the month. Getting ready to make an order, ship a big order of tubes probably, um, I've got some big tubes to get put in, once again, if we can. Find time to get, well, it's gonna be Friday is probably when the contractors aren't in town, because you know where to win their call. Wheels kinda fell off the bus this afternoon with everything, we had two water leaks in thirty minutes, and then the water tower was running over, so. It's been a quite the afternoon.
Wasn't boring, was it?
No. But, uh. Um, I can't say, I don't know.
One thing about the tubes and driveways and such, you know, in the past, it's always been the city's policy not to allow people to have concrete. Over their tubes. And, you know, with the, all the rains we had this year, people's driveways washing out, you know, I think that's a policy that we ought to. Change, you know, we can get a hydraulic breaker to put on the front of that skid loader, to where, you know, if we had to. Remove a tube to access the sewer underneath, or to access the water underneath, we can get a hydraulic breaker to go on the front of that, that would. You know, we could access that stuff just pretty darn quick, a lot quicker with that, you know.
Jackhammer.
Yeah, and, you know, of course, the jackhammer, that's a chiropractor's dream.
A hydraulic jackhammer, basically, is what you're talking about, for the front of skid loader, I mean.
Right. And it'd be a lot better safety wise, and, you know, some of this stuff, that people could put concrete over their tubes and. On their driveways there and save a lot of, you know, their rock washing out into the street every time a rain hits the street. But anyway, that's, that's my feeling on the thing. I guess I priced a hydraulic breaker, but compared to the price of. Uh, one guy's back using the manual breaker. It seems pretty cheap, obviously.
Unless it's awful thick, you can plus it up with a backhoe or anything.
Usually just saw, cut it, and pull it right off.
Yeah, looks like, said, we don't have any right now, we did one, um, last year. And it was a chore. It was a pretty good chore to get out there. But like I said, during the jackhammer, backhoe, and saw we got, but it was thick, I mean, they didn't have a rebar, and they just piled it on there. But most of, like I said, there's, there's really not any in, in town right now, I mean, you know.
No, because it's always, with always telling people you can't do that, and there's been a few that went ahead and did it anyway.
What's the footage on that from the street up the drive, is that, is there a distance?
No, it's just not supposed to be over your tube, just for that reason.
I think it, the, the policy was, is the city right away, which each city street has a, not every one of them has a different, but there's, um.
It's not uniform, it's not just one number for every street.
Right, I mean, like, on the square, it's eighty foot, and the streets right off the square, like sixty foot, and then I think, and then some of them will get down to forty foot from the. Center of the road, you know.
I was just thinking, if we did allow it, that we'd have to come up with a figure on how much, I mean, if they, if they poured a complete driveway of concrete. They might wanna have a seam there where the footage is, so that if we did have to tear it out.
It would look uniform.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to saw cut it, or tear up more concrete than they wanted, or whatever.
Right, and it, and it should, it should also be inspected by Ty and his crew, that way somebody doesn't just pour a concrete driveway out there that they hit with a snowplow every winter too, you know, they make sure that it's done correctly too.
That'd be my one concern with it, cause you know, if we go to making room for one snow to pushing shoulders back to get ready for another one, you know, sometimes we get off. To the ditches as far as we can go, and if you get a concrete lab, I don't wanna. I don't wanna tear up a plow, we'd be responsible for coming back fixing somebody's concrete drive, but.
Well, it's not something that has to be done tonight, but that's, that's my feelings on it, is that. I know Delmar's always been concerned about, uh. Picadilly's driveway up there, and that we should be putting this, and that's actually on their property, they. I don't see why they can't just put some more concrete and come down and have the problem solved and. So why don't you think about that, and we'll.
See, if you can come up with a policy or something. We will adopt it.
Okay. There you go.
Ty, did Harley Hammond talk to you, did he? Do we need to discuss that a little bit?
That's up to you, I don't think it's a big, I mean, I guess I was kinda planning on doing it, I don't think it's a big issue, really, just getting up there and do it, I mean, I, I. Harley Hammond purchased about, um, and you'd probably have to go look at it to know exactly what I'm talking about, if you pull into Harley's driveway though, it was right on the corner of, oh. And that, over the years, it has mounted up rather significantly, I mean, it, there's probably a. I don't know, six, eight inch gap, just from asphalt up, falls off in the driveway, it's, it's kind of a blind spot for him, like if he wants to turn on and go north. Um, you can't see where the hill coming, and he approached me about while the street was already tore up, about cutting that hill down, and. I guess I don't really have a problem with it, I mean, he, he offered to, he first approached me about what the price asphalt was, cause he was just gonna pay to have it. Put back in, but the problem you're running to now is it's getting so late in the year, finding any asphalt, it'd be. Can be hard to find any, if it is, it's not gonna be just tail end stuff, but. The street's not real good anyway, and like I said, they dug a manhole right up about to his driveway, um. So even to get his bike, and chew it down, and, and put some V six X or something on it to, to get his bike until next year, and we could come back if we wanted to put asphalt or something on it, but. It's not gonna hold the way it is anyway, I mean, the road's pretty tore up, but I don't have a problem doing it, I don't really see that it being a big problem, I mean, I, I see his concern. But like I said, with the street the shape it's in now, before it gets too.
He was talking to me like three foot deep, he's wanting to really knock it down.
Yeah.
Three foot to twenty foot long.
Yeah, I don't know, we, we wouldn't be able to take that much.
That's what he's talking to me.
We didn't really talk any depths, but he just said, like, knock that hill down, and I could take, I mean, I could take a foot and a half out of it, probably pretty easy.
I, it sounds like three foot's a lot, but that's what he's talking.
What, what we would probably do is go in where the new manhole is set, we'd probably start right at the top of it, and. What, what we would probably do is go in where the new manhole is set. We'd probably start right at the top of it. I'd come from the north, I'd go right off the top of the manhole and we'd level it off. It's about probably the way we, and that, I could get him, I could probably give him a foot, foot and a half out of there. And I don't see it hurting.
I don't think that will satisfy him though, Ty.
I don't know. I mean.
You need to talk to him because I think he's wanting one of them. Well, I know he is. And he's wanting quite a length.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, it's just kind of a crown. I mean, twenty feet's not that big of a spot, but.
He said he would even do it if the city didn't want to do it. He didn't want to do it, but I don't think liability, I think we need to care.
Yeah, it's a city street. I don't have a problem doing it. I don't I can't get it lower than where, where the manhole's set. And it, it's, there's no moving in. I mean, I can't, I can't expose my manhole.
But it's far enough away the manhole is.
Well, by the time you set that hill down though, it, it's going to be right there. Because they, they set the one back towards this house, yeah. I mean, time, time you come around a corner and set that down to, to level it all up. I guess my take on that is I'll do the best I can do with it. I, I can only go solo. I mean, anything's an improvement. But, yeah, we didn't really talk any, he just wanted to talk about cutting that hill down and having a look at it and. And I don't have a problem doing it, but it's another one of deals where it's, it's not going to be a five minute job. You know, I mean, we're gonna have to take the backhoe up there and, and probably dig the dirt out to get it loose enough that we can do something with it.
There's a lot of blacktop dig up first, like you said.
Yeah, the blacktop won't be such, it's pretty, pretty heavy. Yeah, we get underneath that blacktop though, it's, it'll roll right out of there. We, we talked about that, but um, it won't be too bad. Well, I have the backhoe probably to dig, dig the dirt up anyway because it'd be pretty packed underneath there, but. But yeah, um, I talked to him about it a little bit.
Okay, well, he comes to the house and I'm sure Mike, you know, I wouldn't have been doing it if we talked to head city council, so.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk to him or are you going to be calling?
It didn't matter either way. I mean, I can see him or a few scenes. I, I kind of just planned on doing it, but it's just finding the time to get it done. Because like I said, it, it literally, it's not going to be a, it's not going to be a five minute job to get it where it needs to be. It'll be kind of an all day deal. So. But I'm, I, I don't see the problem with it, I guess myself, I mean.
Okay. What do you guys do with Harley and, and what else do we need to discuss while we have time here?
So what's it going to cost to put asphalt back on it if you're taking twenty feet of?
Asphalt would just go back the same as it did. You put four inches or whatever on it, but it'll be a.
He said you can use it for fill or something once they are part of it. He talked about.
We probably could. There's no base on the road. That's why it's so soft.
He was talking like, you know, I don't know what he's talking about, but.
Yeah. That, that's one of them deals where honestly Rick had a lot of, a lot of these roads are going B six X type stuff because it packs so good. Um. If I was going to spend money on asphalt, I wouldn't be probably worrying about patching that right back there in that little spot myself. My opinion of it. Think when the sewer project gets done, we're going to have bigger issues anyway. As far as getting some main roads patched up.
Yeah.
So. That's my take on that, I guess.
Well, should we talk about Jeff's deal at this time?
No, it was my fault for not getting with you. It was swamp. Um, I did talk with Ron. We, Ron and I think Mike and Ron looked at it. I didn't get up there with them when they was up there. And I don't know kind of what you're thinking you want to do on it. Our, our kind of solution, if you want to try it, if you don't, I guess that's up to you was we could pull that tube out on the north side and put a ditch there to try and keep it from rolling over into your.
Well, I, to me though, that's taken and trying to, after the problem and then trying to keep the water off me. I'd rather we went back and fixed the original problem where that would drain up there. Because I mean, I, I kind of bent Rick's ear one day. He stopped by and he probably wished he had enough, but I kind of showed him and, and he, it's, it's pretty clear that the curve's way too high. I mean, actually, down there where the drain is on the end, the, somebody went in there with a uh, concrete saw and cut a trench into the drain because the curb is so much higher than the road that the water won't drain into the drain. And, you know, I, and, and the, and then the tube up there that goes from that drain over to the one that goes across the road is I think only a twelve inch drain. Went from a sixteen to a twelve when they split that.
The one that runs.
From the, the one, from either one of them to the main one, they, they put a lot.
On the sidewalk, I mean.
Yeah, when they put that corner, um, wheelchair access or whatever.
So I guess that's up to you all.
Well, I don't claim to be an expert and I wish I was and had the magic bullet to shoot on this thing, but you know, just whatever it takes.
I don't know how, I don't know. Jeff's wanting to move the curb down is what Jeff's wanting to do.
No, no, I just want it to drain. I, I don't, I don't care.
But, but in order to do that, you're talking about we need to set the curb back down.
I didn't say that.
If we, if we got.
What's your solution, Jeff?
If we got that to drain, where's the water going to go?
It'll go right on down and out the back like it used to.
Down where?
Down that, right down about at the back. I mean, right, straight east, straight east.
Straight east toward you.
To the back north of you.
There's a sixteen inch tube that goes under the road, goes all the way down. There's a sixteen inch tube under the alley and it keeps going east. Right now, the water goes down the street and across the street and across my yard instead of going under the road and then goes in that back parking lot.
Where it pools and then enters the building.
So the tube going across is big enough, I think? Just getting it there?
Oh, I don't know. I mean.
Is that the one that's a twelve inch he's talking about?
No, it's a sixteen runs all the way into the road. The twelves are on the corners.
On the corners.
There's when they redid the corners for the handicap access, right on the northeast corner, I think there's two twelves that are about, what, six foot long?
Yeah.
And then they tie right into a sixteen inch tube. So you got a six foot and a six foot and a hook into a big long sixteen and goes current of the road north of Jeff's, run on out.
And, and two twelve sounds like that should be plenty for a twelve, or for a sixteen, but the problem is that one twelve doesn't carry anything. The other twelve that goes toward the south carries the entire downtown.
If we dig that twelve inch tube up that's there and put a sixteen, tie a sixteen into the sixteen, will that fix it?
You guys are the water people, huh?
That's just going to put all that water right back on you again. Just going to go under the road this time instead of over.
But that, that's what, that, it worked fine when it did that because it went down and went, it's a sixteen inch line all the way down across me and out the back. Right now, it's carrying a sixteen inch plus. It's running across the road from the other side and, and flooding everything. And before, when it was the old line, and, and Mike made this argument back when they were doing it originally, there was so much capacity on the south, or on the west side of the road to slowly drain. And now there's, there's zero, isn't there? Just about? Capacity over there to hold water?
Yes, and it's, it's not as deep as it was, no.
It didn't sit on the corner anymore, is that what you mean?
It doesn't, you know, if it gets a rain, the water comes down there and as soon as it comes down there, it starts to cross the road. It does.
Would it be feasible to replace the twelve with a sixteen?
Yeah, I suppose, but I don't know if that's going to get done what Jeff's wanting to get done. Because the water Jeff talking about coming across, he says comes across from, from he's saying it's coming across from like the steps.
No, no, it's, it, and I, I, I showed Rick this, the, the corner down where the tube is is actually higher slightly than maybe fifty feet back. And uh, so when it gets down to the corner and it can't drain fast enough, then it starts backing up and then when it comes across, it's going to come across the low spot in the road, which is about fifty feet back from it. It is.
So why can't we bury the tube deeper?
It's not, see.
It's not getting through the tube to these.
That's why I was wanting whoever comes down there, so we can walk out there and look. It's a lot easier to sit there and show you what, what.
We need to do it when it's raining.
It's pretty easy to show when it's going to, I mean, I showed Rick, I think Rick understood it when we were there. The only thing I, I guess I know Jeff is uh, I mean, if it does cross the road, it's still going to go down your, the curb on your street, side of the street, doesn't it? No, it, it goes on past my curb and right on down to the, al- almost to the alley, not quite to the alley. That tube goes all the way.
This one, you mean, or?
See, I already did the tube here down his side, that concrete sidewalk that works.
The, the place we're talking about is over here and this comes across, goes through here and goes all the way down to the skid loader, right in front of it right there. Right now, all the water's coming across and running down along here and washing in right there because it won't, it can't get in the drain across the street.
So you can't get a tube here and then down and put another tube in there?
I'm, I, I don't care. You guys want to put another tube in? I, I'm just saying that it.
So it's not running in your basement from the front of the?
No, it, it's, it's all, everything from both sides of the street is coming down the street and running into my back. But you can see where this is all washed out here and everything, all the way down through there where, you know, it's coming across the street. Well, it, this drain is already handling this side of the street. It can't handle both sides of the street at the same time.
Which is kind of what I like to, my, just my ten cents on it. I mean, was if we put a ditch there where it couldn't get to you, I mean, I because, because I mean, you're going to have water there anyway. Whether it's water across the street or not, there's going to be water running down there whether.
And, and I don't have a problem with it running down there because like again, it'll just go down and go through the tube and go on down.
Well, but you're, you're going to have water right there on the street regardless.
Not very much.
Maybe you get a heavy rain, it'll run pretty good.
Only like from the intersection over maybe twenty feet of water. Right now, I'm getting the entire square.
See here, the water sits, it sits on here. It can't get in here, so it runs across the street down here.
Like I said, this right here used to be about eighteen inches lower and it, and through up here, it's like sixteen inches at that long step. It is. And you can see where they filled in, you know, a bunch just trying to get it up level and, and right now, majority of the water runs down the street, doesn't it? I, I don't, I've never been up there during, I mean, I have been there during the rain, but I mean, you can see where it runs down the street. Just off of, it looks like it's off of the curb. So, I mean, you can tell that it runs in the curb too, but. Well, right here, somebody took a saw and sawed the concrete out right there so that it would actually run into the drain because the, the curb is higher than the street by a couple inches. And, and I showed Rick that, that there's a place where they sawed it to drain it.
So what do you want to try and do with it, Jeff? I mean, I.
I want to drain the water so it doesn't.
I know, but, but I mean, what, 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 you know, what, I'll try and work here however we can. Of course, whatever they want us fund us to do, I mean, but I, I don't know what, you want to lower the curb? You want me to raise the road? I mean.
I, I don't care. I mean, we can take and put sandbags down the center of that street, but look how fast it can.
Be hard to turn that corner.
Two or three suggestions have been thrown out and you don't seem to like them, but you want to tell us what you want.
Well, I, I don't care. You, this is my thing.
You, you don't want water coming across the road. I understand, but.
This is my thing. If, if I say, like, yeah, do the sixteen inch tube and it still won't carry the water, you guys are going to say, hey, we did what you said. And I, and I'm not into that. I just want it fixed.
Well, until you ask us for something, we're probably not going to do anything.
I am asking that the water drain and not come across the street on my property.
But how do you propose that we do that?
In Davy's words, I'm not a ditch guy or a water guy or anything and I would have to say that the council would be that person.
Okay, well, how come every time Ty has a suggestion, you don't seem careful?
Because the only suggestion they had was put a ditch, or a ditch down the side of my property so that it would drain faster past me rather than taking care of the water that is draining up on the street.
It's what's on the street into his yard coming down the hill and the grass.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. The city is diverting the water over onto me and then wanting to put a, a ditch or a bank so that it doesn't cause me a problem.
So how do you propose the city stop doing that in your words?
Well, at one point, we talked about going to the other end of the block, kind of cornered from Lucky's and putting another box and a tube under the street up there.
It needs it anyway, whether, whether it uh, helps Jeff's problem or not, but will that, will that help him?
Well, it could, it certainly couldn't hurt him.
Needs it anyway.
There's going to be, there, you know, there's, if it rains six inches in four hours, there's nothing we can do that's going to prevent.
And, and, and that would, and that would be the, and that would be the exaggerated, like, I'm saying a half, a half inch of rain in a couple hours, it's going to come across my road.
Right.
And, and that's not a huge rain. I mean, if we get four feet in three hours, nobody in town's safe, but that's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and we all understand.
So a half an inch of rain in two hours and the drain on your corner that it's missing, what, is that full?
It's taking care of my side of the street. My side of the street will drain into the drain on my side of the street, but when you then take all the water from the entire square, bring it across the road, no, there's no way that one can do everything.
Then it's full and it's running over.
It's running over from both sides, yeah.
Is that feasible? What do you guys think? Is that feasible to go up there?
I, I think when we did the sidewalk project, Alan and I both stressed very hard that we ought to put that, a drop inlet in that square in that corner up there by the courthouse would be the southeast corner to divert the water down by the sale barn. I remember that we were very adamant about wanting to do that, but several people have thought that it's always trained all the way around there. It'll always, it, it'll do it, so just do it the way it was and that's what we did. I think some of the problems that, that Jeff keeps stating is the crown of the road has been taken off on the west side. It, it still crowns good to his east side and we can't really raise the center of the road up because it creates too much of a dip coming out of his drive. I totally agree with that. I don't know if lowering the curb and upsize, you know, I mean, if you lower the curb six inches and make that a sixteen inch inlet, maybe for thirty feet, twenty feet from that sixteen inch tube, back south, go back and lower the curb six inches so it's got a little steeper drain and then upsize that tube and put a box on the other end, I don't think you'll have any more problems. Now, you know, I've been wrong before. So, that's my two cents.
Do you think we six know?
Is, is there some type of a machine that will grind that down so that water will run into that where it's supposed to? Without doing a bunch of digging?
I, I think you're, I think to be honest with you, I think you're going to have to go back to wherever, maybe back down the stairs or whatever, cut the curb out, drop it down and and pour it in curb. You know, I mean, because in other words, you're going to, the curb is only so thick and.
It sounds to me like if it was two inches lower and wide enough, it would carry that water down to where it's supposed to go.
No, like I said, yeah, the concrete, we'll just have to take it out.
You can probably get a milling machine, but what's that gonna do to your curb? It, the, the problem is it, it can't be more than one.
Five or six inches.
Thick to serve it. It was, the, the, the curb part that they drive on was a foot thick. Or, or, or maybe it was the top of it's a foot thick and then the curve's four inches tall or five inches tall and the others.
Yeah, I think it's six inches and then it's got the curb on top of it.
Is that?
But the problem is if you drop, and if you drop the curb.
It's okay if it's, as long as it jumps the other way. If it's wide enough, it'll carry a lot of water, but it sound, it didn't sound like the water's falling the, the curb.
Well, I think we should look into the box up by catty corner from Lucky's and, and another outlet, and try to get rid of a lot of the water before it even gets into that side.
Unfortunately, a lot of that water doesn't go to that corner. It still comes across, comes on the street. It might fix it, I have no idea. I just, all the water from the four H Pavilion, all that up there, comes across and, I mean, the city crew just scooped all the rock up and put it back in, uh, 'cause of the community center parking lot drains off the east side.
And, and I'm not doubting that the water didn't wash the gravel out, but I couldn't, I went by there one day and I couldn't tell if it was the kids' bicycles dragging the gravel all out or if it was water running through there, 'cause there was bicycles, a hundred bicycle tracks.
There was a, there was a ditch right around the end of the stone, 'cause the stone doesn't go all the way up. There was actually a ditch where it washed all the rock down. It looks like it drains south to me. I don't know. Maybe I'm looking at it crooked, but, the parking lot.
And up my track and see if you can't find anything to grind that down where it flowed down the, down the curb where it's supposed to.
I'd be curious.
My, my two cents on that is if you come in, if you come in and tried that and it didn't work, then you go and dig it out.
We'd put the tube in at the south end like we're talking about and see if we can't get something to make that where that water will stay in that curb until it gets to the tube. And then go back down to the alley and run in your yard again.
The, the promise at the time was, 'cause we, we went over this issue, Mike stopped construction of it and everything when this happened. And we sat there and talked about it, and the, the idea was that you guys were going to blacktop it like that year. And then he said that what he'd do is set the machine on the edge of the curb and come down through there and the water would run over into the curb. And I don't know, it was, it was a lot of blacktop you guys put in there that year, and it still didn't get up to the curb. That's how much fill had to be put in because the curb was raised so high over there. And then it never was blacktopped or anything. It wasn't, so.
What do you think, Doug?
I would say a, a, a single patch of layer would help on that side. You know, if we take the machine, one, probably one pass would.
It'd have to of the center of the street.
Yeah, yeah, you feather it out a little ways, but.
'Cause then you'd have water running down the edge of it.
Well, you, but you, you know, you feathered out on that one end and feathered out to come out, but. I mean, that, that would definitely help. I don't deny that, but I mean, you said it. But.
But before that, you said something, put something in and if it didn't work, dig it out or?
Well, like Rama was saying, if you get somebody to, if you wanna come in and try and shave part of that curb down and try it, you're not out, maybe if it don't work, you, you know, you're looking at possible digging out, dropping a little bit on that end anyway. I mean, you can come in and, and what he's talking about, just grind it some off of the curb without disturbing any of the sidewalk, still there and all that.
Just, just so you know, those milling machines are not gonna leave a smooth finish.
No.
When they're done, you know, I mean, it's gonna be rigid all the way down that curb that he pills on. I mean, it's not gonna put a nice finish on it to where.
And at the end, it still need to dig it out and put the bigger tube in.
So we should start there by digging it out and putting the bigger tube in?
I agree, yeah, put the bigger tube in, but you're talking about this much area. Now, the length of the street is, that's an ungodly amount of money. That we actually don't have at this point. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to come up with a solution that's in our price range, I guess.
Well, that's where the problem started is we didn't have the money for the project that was done. We didn't write any of the checks for the project. We didn't have, we had some control, but not total control over what was done up there because we didn't have the money in the project.
But at the same time, I would think that if I decided to put the curb in on my side and decided to do whatever I wanted to do, I would think the city could stop and say, no, you're, we, this is what you have to do. This is, these are the rules we need and this is what it has to be, not just that anybody can do anything they want to.
Did we know that that was too high when they did it?
Yes. Mike stopped the project.
He came, he came, he came into town from being gone.
We, we had actually taken, we took some sections of concrete out 'cause they were gonna come out.
He, he came in.
Above the pavement.
He came into town and they could immediately see that it was running uphill and gonna be over the road.
We tried, we tried to salvage, what happened is when they got to the corner, somehow or another, the contractor got on the wrong grid. I don't know what happened.
And they were going.
Uphill all the way there, and by the time they got to the end, they were gonna be out of the, uh, street, basically, if they kept following the same grid. So to save, because we only had, they only had a set amount of money to try and save what was going on, we went back and took out two or three sections and tried to get it dropped down from there to save the project. In other words, they were gonna have to take out the entire east side of that square's curb, which would have put them twenty to thirty thousand dollars over budget, so we tried to salvage what we had by stopping them, taking out a couple pieces of curbing and starting over on a new grade and without having an extreme hump on lowering it.
And that's where the water's coming from.
And that, and that, that's where we're at now. We tried to salvage what was done wrong and this is where we're at.
Now it's gonna cost us.
To save them, it costs us. Right?
So I don't remember that. I guess we should have the contractor just rip it all up and fix it at the time.
We'll do some digging. Maybe we can get somebody to grind that down, especially where you're talking where.
I, well, the hump is, yeah, just have to come over and let me show you what we're talking about, 'cause I don't think anybody gets pictures setting around here. They just think it did.
I already was there and looked at it, I mean.
But, I mean, I, to me, if I was doing it, I guess, and I was throwing your guys' money at it, my first thing would be to go down to the corner and put a sixteen inch tube in and get it back to where it's, it'll carry it. Uh, I guess if I was throwing more money at it, I'd go up to that other corner and put a tube across going east. I would think the people down east would throw a fit, 'cause there's no tubes going further east, 'cause it's just gonna run down in their yard. But that's not me, so I don't care. Uh, and then I, I would think over on that curb by the community center, they have a wing wall that goes up through there and stops, and all the water comes around the end of that wing wall and washes the rock out into the sidewalk and the curb and the street. And if you took that wing wall on up to the corner, at least the water coming across that parking lot to the east would come into your tube that you're wanting to put across up in that corner. That would at least take that much more water out of there.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about people downstream of the east.
Yeah, but they can come some other meeting and talk to you guys.
Sure, sure. What do they call that? The law of unintended consequences? Every time you fix something, it poses another problem.
That's why all the way back when this curb issue came up, um, you know.
Well, I'll be happy to come look at it when I get off work tomorrow. I'll be happy to come look at it.
I shall too, just name a time.
It'll be about six.
But it sounds like a sixteen inch tube where the sixteen inch tube is in the corner and, and what we're talking about, the drain.
Maybe that is the best place to start.
Because we still, it, it erodes the weather, the people like the water in their ditch. We still need a drain there. Always have needed a drain there.
Well, he's got a good point. Maybe we ought to see where that water would go, how many problems we're causing downstream.
It goes one block east and then makes a turn and runs south, or north, I mean.
The only problem is when it gets to the alley behind the lumberyard, there isn't no, no thing. There is a little grate about this thing that's got dirt over the top of it, and that yellow house there to the left is probably gonna get the majority of the water, or it's gonna kick it out in the road. And you guys don't want it going down the center of that blacktop. They'll run right up the middle of your blacktop.
Yeah, if we put it in, we'd have to ditch it on the south side of the old lumberyard. We'd have to ditch it, put a tube in the alley. Then you just have to chase it downstream.
I guess you could cut a catty corner where that other one goes. There's another tube that goes from the courthouse across there. But I don't know how much water it makes, I don't know.
You can't go south from the corner of the court, the, uh, community center parking lot?
I don't know if elevation, I don't know, elevation wise, if you may or not, and then you're gonna run into part of the same problem of what the carrying capacity would be. 'Cause it's all on the road, you know, holding your tongue with so much water.
Well, you'd be around about six tomorrow night.
I can be.
Do we need to get someone from the community center involved, maybe, so they know what's going on?
Sure, that sounds like a.
Well, I, I don't know. If you're gonna start messing around with theirs, that's what.
Well, we're really not yet.
Not yet.
Well, I'll see you tomorrow night about six o'clock. And everybody keep their thinking caps on. Anything else for Ty? If there's nothing else for Ty, let's talk to Mike right, oh.
Sorry. Um, can we get some rock hold at the end of, not Clay Street, what's the one here in this street?
Monticello.
Monticello, way at the, uh, east end.
Down the view on that corner.
Yeah, I mean, it washed out this summer, but.
Yeah. Yep, better on there.
Should we put on the record about viewing the truck and writing a letter or something?
Oh, I, I dotted that down because you kinda missed it out there, so I put, and, and put that on there together, a thank you letter. Give you all the calls, the mayor said.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Alwerty? So how goes it down there?
We're doing better. Um, as you can see, we're back down, we're only, we're down a hundred percent. So everything's still clicking along, um, waiting on upgrades, waiting on Bros to call me and tell me that our equipment's in. I did get the ball fields moat and the big field's looking about seventy-five percent. It's not quite a hundred percent, but it's a lot better than it was. The little field, I bladed it around and we'll, kinda see, we'll probably need some sand and stuff to haul in there in the spring and kinda fill in some low spots and stuff that might hold water. But other than that, I don't have anything. We're gonna be hauling quite a bit of sludge this month to try and get things up.
It stays dry.
Yeah.
In that respect.
So unless you've got anything for me, that's it.
Not at this point.
All right, thank you.
Robert, do you have anything?
She said everything's been pretty normal, pretty calm.
He had no comments on that street over there then?
Uh, he didn't say anything about it. I asked him if he had anything for you and he says he didn't.
We're supposed to be watching.
I'm sure he probably has, but he didn't pass anything on to me to pass on to you guys.
Now, my experience in the past is that, you know, people just kinda have a sixth sense that, that when that car's around, they seem to know it and they all behave.
They're marked, they're marked for a reason.
And just assume that if a car just.
They're probably going a different route, which is, uh.
Well, I know they're still speeding in the run the stop sign, and they've been going around the ditch around the speed bump.
They're going around ditch, run speed bump. I'll pass that on and.
Uh, it's very evident, you can see the ditch.
The property owner put up a.
Oh, that's. They put out little crates?
Oh, yeah, wooden crate and a red flag where they.
Cause they've been going around.
Do we have any idea who it is? I mean, that would be, it'd be nice if they would call in who it was and give us a little guidance on.
People that told me did not know.
Yeah, I mean if.
But now, the other girl might know, since she put the thing up there.
If they had any idea who it was, it wouldn't be a big problem to go have a little chat with them.
Echo, is your night camera, couldn't have to get license plate numbers?
I haven't tried that.
Night vision won't work on the front and back there.
He didn't have like super doohickeys compared to what I'm working with.
Been my experience, it's, it's pretty rough to get anything with that night vision stuff whenever it.
Well, I guess, a lot of it's happening during the day, you know. It wouldn't have to be at night.
I've heard everything. Everything bad about the speed bumps and gravel roads that we're making and.
There's gotta be somewhere.
And the lawsuits are gonna come from people tearing up their cars and.
It's always darkest before the dawn, hopefully, hopefully dawn will come one of these days. Uh, moving on, let's see, under unfinished business, I guess we're gonna talk about the country club some. I guess I ought to apologize to the board, because, uh, you know, I guess I've never talked to the board. We've had so much turnover in the board in the last couple of years. But I, I guess I've, you know, a lot of the board members have no idea, when you, Echo was asking questions last month, I'm sure there's some people that had no idea what we were talking about, 'cause we've never actually briefed the board. I, I've never thought that, I guess it just hadn't entered my mind, so. John and I are both members of the Community Development Corporation, along with the commissioners and the three high commissioners, uh, a former alderman, uh, Mr. Miller, he was a member or is still a member, so, you know, he knew what the scoop was. Doug Mayer from the other bank is a member, and then Bob Huffman, who had Huff's in Ock City, but I think he's kinda retired, but he's still on the board. Randy Redding's on the board, Pat Parsons. Uh, they were founding members. They've been on the board for years and years and years. I don't know whether you want me to start. Do you wanna start, John? I guess the, my thought on it is that, uh, when the country club folded, there were, you know, the country club had debts, mostly the local businesses, and, you know, the only assets they had were that building, even though they didn't own the ground under it, so, but anyway, the community development kind of as a favor to the city took over the country club's assets, paid off all the local businesses, paid all the country club's debts, so now the local businesses got stiffed out of the deal. And then the community development, as a favor to the city, has overseen the upkeep of the building. uh, paid the utilities on the building, and, and just generally taking care of it, so the city council doesn't have to. So our already two hour long meetings, we don't have to have a third hour while we sit here to talk about what all's going out to the country club building. Do we need to work on the gutters out there? Do we need to replace the glass? To me, it's just been a, a favor that community development has done for the benefit of the city. Now, if the city on tomorrow finds out that we can get a GM plant to go out where that property is, you know, community development be more than glad to sign off and just throw that, the whole deal into the great GM project. You know, we've been basically maintaining that building for the benefit of the city. How far, how far off am I from?
Well, you, you're there, but, I mean, basically, the Community Development Corporation just felt that, uh, the, the buildings have value, the cart sheds, two of them are junk, but there's, there's three of them that are metal, that have, uh, they're pretty good buildings, and, you know, they could be taken down and moved, or the city could use them there for storage, uh, but at the time that the country club was wanting to pay their bills and, and, uh, get out from underneath all of that out there, all of the buildings were listed with the county assessor as personal property, because they can't be real property because the city owns the land, okay, and.
Similar to the Bering Country Club, where the people own the cabin, but they don't own.
But they don't, don't own the land, and so with the city being unsure of what they're wanting to do with the lake property, and, you know, there, there were several things over the last several years that have come, uh, come about that the board has, you know, not really been interested in.
A lot of people have come up with projects for us to give away the ground.
Yeah, they want to give, the city to give the land away, uh.
Well, we didn't want to buy it for homes, we didn't tell people we wanted to do that.
Yeah, but there again, if, if the city was going to, to, you know, ha, make it available for homes, then the homeowners, uh, as they buy the ground, would have to put in some kind of, of sewer system. And, uh, so we had looked at maybe trying to incorporate that into the city sewer project. Uh, it doesn't look like we'll have enough money left at the end of that for that, but until the city decided what they were going to do with the land, and if there was a development that would maybe come, that would wanna expand out there or build out there, then we felt that, uh, that the clubhouse, uh, had value to the community as maybe a restaurant, if there was a, a shopping mall that would go in out the lake, or if there was, uh, some other use of the lake, then it could maybe be used as a concession stand for activities, fair activities, something like that. Uh, the buildings could be used by somebody or at the city as, uh, storage buildings, uh, but you better have some pretty heavy locks, because I've already lost twelve of them out there. They get cut off as fast as I can put them on. Uh, but we just felt that there were too many assets out there to just let them fall away. Uh, I will say that if the city is concerned about how we're administrating it, we'll probably have a meeting and you'll have ownership of them by your next meeting. We, we ju, we're trying to help out the city and just kinda keep the assets, uh, to where if down the road they can be used, okay. If down the road, uh, we need to go in with a bulldozer and knock them all down, then, uh, we can do that too. But, uh, we just, we thought there were some assets there that we would, we put a new roof on the clubhouse, we put a new balcony on the clubhouse, we finished putting siding on the clubhouse, so it's all done now. The basement is, has been torn out, and, uh, but one of the things that, uh, did come about was the Life and Christ Church that is meeting currently over at the lumberyard. They had, uh, one of the places they'd met here in town for a while was out at the clubhouse originally, and so they contacted me and wanted to know if, if they could maybe, uh, use that out there. I'm sorry, and, uh, uh, one of the things we, we have done with all of our properties here in town is that nothing brings in any income for the community development, and so we, we don't pay, uh, any taxes with the county on that, because we don't have any income generated by it. And, uh, so we had had people who were wanting to rent it from us and put in a restaurant and things like that, but at the same time, there wasn't, uh, there wasn't any way we could really do that, uh, as the Community Development Corporation, and, uh, so that was, thank you, sir. That was, uh, kinda going against the things that, the way we handle our properties here in town. But, uh, the, the church would take care of the property, uh, they, they would use it for six months or they might use it for ten years, if, if it's that long before the city does anything out there.
And I never assumed that the city would have any objections to having a church out there. They seem like pretty good tenants, but do you guys think that's a terrible idea?
I think it's great, I, I just didn't know, so now I know.
See, that's it, I, I think a lot of it's happened and we knew nothing about it, even before the other council members, before you guys even. It was all done before any of us knew it.
And I didn't know until you brought it up, and I didn't know how to answer the question, you know, I didn't know, so now I know.
But it wa, it was, I was approached by, uh, uh, Annie Fisher, uh, who was, I guess, the treasurer of the country club.
For many years, yeah.
And, uh, the thing was, the country club had, had members, and so if they had debts, then the debt was gonna have to be distributed all, among all the members that they had ever had, and they were gonna have to find out which ones were still alive and, and not, and if anything was left in the checking account, then they had to distribute it evenly among all of the members that they've ever had. And so what they wanted to do was they wanted to be able to pay their bills and not have one single cent of assets left at the end. So they figured out how much money they owed the merchants around, and the only thing they had were those buildings, and they owned them as personal property, because they didn't have the land. And so they offered to sell us the tractors, the lawn mowers, all the equipment, everything that was in the sheds, the sheds and the country club for exactly what they owed the merchants, and so we paid them, and, and Annie asked Doug, and so Doug, uh, asked, got with us, and so our board decided we would, we would go ahead and purchase it, and so we put about twenty-five thousand in, we put another, uh, close that, we put over ten thousand in, in, in keeping, uh, keeping it up. So we've got about thirty-five thousand in it so far. Don't know if that's more than it's worth, less than it's worth. All we know is that's what it cost us to get them out of their, but, their deal and maintain the, the, the clubhouse. The clubhouse, the back, I don't know if anybody saw the back patio, it, wood patio, it was rotten, it was just about to fall off, the roof was getting really bad, and so we had all those repairs done. If the city wants it, we'll give it to you, you know, you can pay the utilities, so you can pay the heat, you can pay the upkeep, you can have whatever you want. If you want the outbuildings, we'll give them to you. But we just didn't want them bulldozed down, we just didn't want them to fall down and look, we've got enough properties falling down around here without, out there having some things that, that people had used and, and seemed to enjoy, uh, using those facilities, so we just, we're trying to save them, and the city at that point in time had nothing in their budget that they could put into the, the project, so we just kinda stepped up, so the city didn't have to.
So we're all.
That's, we're, we're the guys that put, paid for putting the curbing in over there that you're having trouble with. Don't blame me, we just gave them the money so that they could do the curbing, but we did that because they came to the city and the city said you didn't have the money, and so we stepped in and, and did that where the city couldn't. That's what we did out of the lake too, okay? And, and I think, uh, Annie had talked to some of the councilmen that were on at that time, and, and the city, they were just saying, there's nothing the city can do to help you, and so that's the reason the community development stepped in, so.
I guess in other community development news, we're exploring avenues to what to do with the old.
Yes. I don't know. The old Parsons Newton Building.
The old Parsons Newton Building.
I've had, had people scheduled to come and take a look at it with me and for tearing it down, uh, over the last three years, and they've all stood me up. I think they come and look at it earlier and they decide they don't wanna tackle it, but I do have, uh.
It's got the alley here.
I wanna break that plate glass out of there, I'm scared of it.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't wanna, the news to be council member knocks out plate glass.
That's not the one, it's one.
On the corner.
The west of it.
Scare them.
It, it's the brick one, it's not the wood one.
Oh, the wood one with the, who owns that, that's not you.
That's, that's, uh, two, you got that?
Shaw?
Shaw, yeah, that's Shaw's. We got the brick one on the other, on the east side of the alley. But see, when we, we bought the Herner property over here back in ninety-five, ninety-six, second week after we bought it, the staircase fell from the, from the top floor all the way down into the basement. And when we were, we had, we spent seventy thousand dollars tearing that building down. And they got at it and they hit it one time with the cracko after they had half the walls down, and the wall of what is now the clothes closet started doing this, and so they decided, they took that north wall down, one brick at a time, and we put epoxy on that whole wall to keep it from caving in on the, the clothes closet, because it was all brick that was soft brick, that if the weather touched it within three years, it was gonna fall down and take the building next to hit with it. And I, I think they're looking at that same problem with the Parsons Newton Building. They're afraid, it's not attached to John Love's building on the east side. I think they're afraid that if they start taking that one down, then Love's building's gonna go with it, and that's a real problem sometimes. But, we're, we're trying to, trying, and we're, we've contacted Dave Davidson to come back in and redo this over here. Uh, so we're gonna get that, that all fixed up again. But, anyway, that's what we're, we're doing, that's what we're trying to get done, that's what we did at the lake. If you like it, okay, if you got any ideas, tell us, if you want a contract with us, if you want us to have some kind of agreement with you on what we can do and can't do, we'll either do it or we'll give it to you. So, uh, if you got a problem, tell us and we'll get out of your way and let you all handle it. If, but i- if you don't have a problem with it, then we'll just keep doing what we're doing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bodie. Echo, did you have any more questions?
Thanks for the explanation, John.
Yeah. I get, I had a long talk with John after the last meeting, so I was up to speed pretty much. Are you guys gonna, are you guys doing anything different? Are you gonna do a contract, just to kinda have your eyes dotted and your t's crossed? Does that matter?
Digest, I don't see.
I just learned, so I don't know.
Right.
They probably wanna think about it for a while, but I really don't see the need to spend thousands of dollars in legal fees to get.
I don't see them doing anything wrong, and I guess we have control if they do, so.
Yeah, well, it's.
You still own the property, you can kick us out anytime.
The way I understand it, it's kind of an open-ended thing, whereas the church would go in, and if you guys ever need the property for anything, then the church would go out.
Yeah.
I was out there, and the church has done a lot of cleaning up, a lot. There's more to be done. Yeah, the only question is, I, like, there's really no protection for the church, really.
Well, if they don't care, why should anybody else? You know, we don't have any protection on a deed, so.
So basically, the city holds all the cards, right? The city holds all the cards.
Yes, because they've got the land, yeah.
And there's no legality, is, and are they supposed to bid things out, or, do you know what I meant, do you understand what I'm saying?
They didn't know, they didn't know the property.
Like, for example.
Or the road to it or anything.
Yeah, like, they do a lease for the mowing part?
Yeah.
Do they need to do a lease for the rest of the land? I mean, do they need to leave?
It sure is the parking lot's not, the rest is sure they could use.
Parking lot right there?
I think we can, I think that problem will still be around next month. I don't think they have to solve that problem. I wanna go home.
Me too.
Um, what's next on the agenda?
Um, new business.
Any other unfinished business? Is there any new business anybody wants to bring up? What's the stack of cards?
Oh, I just brought them to show to the girls. They ended up.
Boys can't look at them?
You can look at them.
A dollar for the small, two dollars.
So that's nothing we have to.
Not really council business, yeah, no.
Okay, well, that's pretty neat.
There are city, there are city.
Water tower?
Is it tied to the pole to be removed? The mold, does it get that time to get it cleaned?
Well, you know, when they said that the tower was leaking, Melissa and I were looking out the window to see if we could see anything, and I said, oh, I see a lot of green.
I guess it only happens every third year, so I'm not sure where we're at.
Every couple of years, they do, it's some maintenance thing, and it's part of the maintenance that has to happen with the tower. They power wash it when they do. We went through this a couple of years ago.
Well, I got a question.
Oh.
Okay. It, it appears to me that our next meeting, our scheduled, will fall on Columbus Day. Do we meet on Columbus Day?
Well, we have it in the past, but it's not really fair to our employees, because they get that day off.
No, no.
Oh, no.
We don't get Columbus Day off.
Was I thinking of Veterans Day or something?
We get Veterans Day, and we get President's Day in February.
So we will be meeting on.
Yeah, so we meet there.
That is also Thanksgiving.
And Canadians, the Native exception.
We will meet this, right?
Yeah, right.
We should go out and party with the Canucks up there.
Uh, then I move if we adjourn.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stansberry. All those in favor of adjourning, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. All those standing, same sign. Madam Clerk, I count five. No, I count twelve. No names, no extensions.
Six, six each.
We've survived another meeting.